We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council's order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Tevin, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, please help guide us as we perform the business of the city this evening. And please help keep everyone in our community safe through the upcoming July 4th holiday and celebrations. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Neekar.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lo.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Ms. Townsend.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is for the 2014 tax budget.
Are we going, do we amend the agenda first?
Oh, yes. I forgot. Before we do the...
Mr. President.
Ms. Towns.
I move that tonight's agenda be amended to add one Robert Horton to privilege of the floor, to add ordinances 138, 139, and 140, 13.
Second. The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Robert Horton under privilege of the floor and by adding ordinances 138, 13, 139, 13, and 140, 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Now we'll go to the public hearings. The first one is for the 2014 tax budget, and I'll have the clerk read the call.
Notice is hereby given that on the first day of July 2013 at 7:00 PM in the Lima City Council chambers, 50 Town Square, Lima, Ohio, a public hearing will be held on the 2014 tax budget for the city of Lima. All interested persons desiring to speak to the budget will be given an opportunity to do so at the time. Following is a summary of the budget. General Fund, $27,469,249. Water Works Fund, $13,140,516. Sewage Disposal Fund, $9,908,678. Garbage and Refuge Fund, $2,984,082. Water Works Extension and Improvement, $3,415,396. Sewer Improvement, $7,443,880. Stormwater Sewer, $2,556,023. Miscellaneous Funds, $21,579,747. For a total of $88,497,571. Copies of the entire tax budget are in file in the office of the Clerk of Council and the office of the City Auditor, Municipal Center, 50 Town Square, and will be open to public inspection during regular working hours.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the issue of the 2014 tax budget? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. For the second call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the issue of the 2014 tax budget, please come forward and state your name and address. Third and final call, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the 2014 tax budget, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. The next public hearing is the CDVG public hearing. Lima City Council will open a public hearing on the CDVG allocations for the proposed 2013-2014 CDVG home allocations. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward to speak to that, those allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Phil Hain. I'm the CEO, President, of the United Way of Greater Lima, and I would ask you to consider our request this year with regards to CDVG money and the total amount of $35,000 to be matched by United Way Greater Lima for a community grant writer. We believe this is a great opportunity to bring some significant more resources into this community and to work in partnership with the city in order to do that. So I would ask for your consideration with regards to our request. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I just have a couple of questions. Your grant writer is just going to work right there with the United Way funding or are they going to be a researcher for all the United Way peoples involved in United Way?
It's going to be a grant writer that's available to the community that includes our current partners as well as other partners that we would identify as being appropriate for whatever grants we would seek. And we would work closely in collaboration and partnership with the city around that.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I have a few questions. Some of the concern I've heard on this possibility of funding is looking at your application, the nonprofits that are viable and the nonviable. I think you're going to try and assist all to obtain funding above and beyond the reduced CDVG funding that we're getting currently, to obtain other funding besides this.
Correct.
Okay. One concern I've been hearing about is that it would assist the nonprofits that are in the city, that assists city residents versus countywide. Is that your intent, or...
The intent is to focus on the city of Lima because my understanding is that we have to focus on the five-year plan that the city has and that the intent would be to be in partnership and in alignment with that.
The target area that qualified for these fundings.
Correct. Absolutely. Yeah.
In looking this over, you had a breakdown if they were an employee versus a contract worker, and there was like a $15,000 difference because of fringes and things not being included.
Correct.
So it would not be if someone on your staff currently?
Correct.
Okay. It would be someone new?
It would be a brand-new position that we would have.
And we had a discussion in, and again, I want to note that some of these estimates for travel and training preparation, you know, they could be low or high depending on the activity of the grant writer, but you've estimated roughly, I think, well. But again, there's, like I say, a $15,000 difference between $70,000 and $55,000.
Correct.
Is what it would be from a contractor to an employee.
Correct.
And in our discussions and maybe in any motion, you know, it might help if it is a contract because of the reduced funding.
Correct.
Okay. So, this grant writer, and I probably have asked it a different way, is not to prepare the nonprofits in getting their hopes up to think that they're going to come back onto the CDVG funding allocation. This is to go completely after new money.
Correct.
Okay. And can this be accomplished in a year because of the condition of the funding as we currently have it already at a reduced rate? In a year from now, we may not have this matching fund. How viable do you think it would be to get some progress in a year's time?
I think we can get some progress. Obviously, it would have, it would be very contingent upon making sure that we hired the right person who could do, who could be aggressive in seeking funding. But I believe because United Way has also got quite a considerable investment in this, that it would be our intent to make sure that this position continued on. My experience with developing grant, good grant writing is sometimes it can take up to two years to really begin to see some of the return on the investment of that. But I think that there are opportunities that we've seen out there that are, you know, we believe are ready for us to try and seek these funds. And so it will be really important to make sure we get a well-qualified person, a person that can write well and be pretty aggressive in terms of seeking those grants.
There was also a concern of the current programs that the city runs through the rec program and the parks of assistance, you know. There's some concern about that being taken away or hurting our programs?
I don't, no, I, there's no intention to do that at all.
Okay.
If anything, we're here to add value and to bring additional resources into the community on top of what is already being provided in this community.
Okay. That's all I have right now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Is there... Mr. President?
Mr. McLean? I want to thank you for explaining this process to us because I've had a lot of questions with it, too. But I guess one of the things that I look at, the CBD money, is it's for developing of our community. So we want to use those dollars as wisely as we can. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from my understanding, you're going to match $35,000, if we put $35,000, to get a grant writer, to go after money, to help all the people that actually need, could be applying to us for the CBD money. Places like the Cheryl Allen Center, places like The Mission, places like Bradfield Center. Those that haven't applied this year could have applied in the past. This may help them. I guess I always think if you teach a man how to fish, you kind of make himself to fish it. And if you give them some teaching and show them how to get grants on their own, they may not come back to the well.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my hope and my intent with this, is to see if we can help those people with the $35,000 of our money, and for dollar for dollar, you're matching 35 of yours. So I look at this as a great positive. I think it can really help our community in developing, show them how to do the grants or at least give them the training and process it because we in the city don't have the time to do it. We can't help them through the CBD process. And we as a city can track you or money because it is in that plan. So I'm all for this. I think this is a great way to spend a little bit of money to help some of the other nonprofits gain some money, hopefully in the next few years, and at least teach them to fish. That's my hope. So I'm going to support.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there anybody else? Mr. President, I'd just like clarification because I've heard two different things. From what Mr. McLean just said, it was to help them, help nonprofits go after CBD funds. I thought that the issue was to get them away from CBD funds and bring funds, a new revenue stream as these funds are dwindling.
I did not mean that, Tom, if that's what you took. That was not my intent at all. The intent was, I believe he is looking for other funds so they aren't coming back to the well, which is CBD.
The well's drying up.
Right.
Yeah. That's the issue. That's all I have. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
You had talked about also in your application of a board overseer of this coming through United Way. And there would be reports made. Would there also be requested a city rep to be sitting there as well?
Correct. No, we definitely see it as a partnership with the city and that the city would need to be at the table with us. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Hain, I have a question, a couple of questions. I think Mr. McLean may have answered partially. What are, I guess, I'm trying to figure out exactly what agencies could potentially benefit from this. What are some of the agencies that could benefit from it?
Well, I think there could be a number. We could certainly look at our current partner agencies, of which there are 22, 23 of them, okay? But we would not be, it would not be a closed situation by any stretch of the imagination. We would look at other partnerships with other organizations in the community because we really need to look at what's best for the community and the people that live in the community. So it would be, depending on the kind of grant we would go after, which I would hope would be large grants, which would require significant partnerships, we could look quite broadly at who those other organizations might be. So I go into it with an open, an open mind, but we want to make sure we have good organizations that have good credibility, that can deliver on whatever the grant requires, those services to be, that have to be delivered.
Mr. President. Can I go with my question? Yeah. I was just going to clarify that, but... Because I've got, I've got some others. Are you able to quantify, I guess, the value of grants, maybe that you've seen that are out there? Are you, I mean, do you have any idea how to quantify the grants that are out there that in the past haven't been able to, been gone after because we don't have this resource to go after them? Is there a defined value there?
I don't, I don't know if I would say that there's a defined value, but I look at the opportunities that have gone on recently in which grants of over $1 million have been brought into this community to address needs. And there have been opportunities where some folks have said, you know, there's this grant out there, and we just don't seem to have our act together as it was to be able to go over that, to go after those. So I'm looking at grants that are substantial amounts. I mean, it's not the small, you know, 25 here, 30 there. That doesn't get us where I think we want to go, but looking at large grants that can have significant impact on the folks in our community. And that's really, it's hard to really quantify, but I, all I can say is I think that they need to be large, large grants that we go after. But we've seen some success, but I think we can get more success, and I think that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. Is it safe to say that you've seen some grants that we just simply haven't had, that are out there, that we likely could qualify for, but we haven't had the resource or the manpower to go after?
Right. And that's the typical thing that I see with a lot of nonprofits, is that there's opportunities there, but nobody has that resource on their staff in order to be able to do, to write those grants, not, not only on their staff, all the resources to hire someone to do those kinds of things. So this is what I think this is able to do.
Are these the types of grants that will require a local match? And I guess is the city then going to be asked to provide those local matches, or will it be incumbent on the agencies that are going to be the beneficiaries?
Some of them might require a match, but matches come in different types of form. Sometimes they can be in-kind services that don't require, you know, dollars. Some of them do, and if we go after something, we've got to make sure we find where those resources can come from. But I think that's, the group that will be looking at those grant opportunities will have to wrestle with some of those kind of challenges.
Okay. How, I guess, if this is approved, how going forward do we quantify the return on investment for the city?
Well, I think it comes down to, obviously, you know, you know, one way you look at it is dollars in terms of what grants have we been able to procure or get awarded that come back into the community that can be very measurable dollars that we bring back into the community. I guess the other one that's not quite as clearly measurable, but is really looking at the kinds of partnerships that we can develop, that we think have great potential for the future, so that we can position ourselves to go after some of those grants. But bottom line is people are going to say, well, we invested this amount of dollars. So how many dollars have we brought back into the community as a result of that? And that's probably the most quantifiable measure that we can look at.
You know, my resistance to this, okay, has been based on what we have pretty much done in the past, where other than city staff positions, we have not, generally as a rule, have not funded staff positions for other agencies. We've done, you know, supplied resources, money for projects. And that, this, that's the thing that I've been kind of struggling with, is because we haven't done it this way in the past. It's not casting aspersions on the proposal at all, okay? What we have done in, you know, we have set aside money in CDVG that neighborhood organizations or other, you know, have used as, have accessibility to for local match, okay? So, you know, I'm struggling with this, too, because there's also the old axiom out there that the definition of insanity is to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results. What happens if this doesn't bring about results? And I think I'm hearing you say that this may end up being a repeat request next year.
Could be.
And if it's successful, I have less heartburn about it, okay?
Right.
You know, and I'm not going to say that I was misquoted because I wasn't, but that's why I objected to it. And frankly, I told the committee chairperson that I would, you know, I may vote no on the motion to make an amendment, but if it passes, I'm not going to vote no on the entire plan, okay? So I appreciate you coming and answering the questions. It does make a little more sense, and I'm still not decided yet which way I'm going to go, okay? In theory, it sounds good, okay? But again, it's getting over what we've done in the past, and next year, when the applications come in, we're going to then be in a position, somebody's going to say, well, we want to have this person on staff, and in the past, up until now, if this gets approved, we've not done that. And I think that that has been, in the past, some basis for not approving some requests. We opened that door. So I'm wrestling with it.
Okay.
Okay? So... Mr. Neekar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Neekar. I just wanted to clarify, and while I certainly support this, that should come as no surprise as I am a board member of the United Way, so I want to make it clear that whatever action's taken here tonight, we'll be abstaining from a vote, should there be any. But when you ask specifically for partners, I think it's important to mention that the two partners that the United Way has really brought together through some innovative funding, through some venture funding, were the kindergarten camp program with the Lima City Schools in Laka. And it's a program that I think all participants have been, I don't want to say pleasantly surprised because I think that would be a vast understatement as to how successful the program has been viewed. And those are two agencies, two organizations here in town that I'm not sure had the best track record of working together prior to the United Way working with those. And I think that those are certainly two non-United Way agencies that would have to be likely candidates for some of this activity as well, as well as the city, the county, RPC, and some of those other organizations that we think of. So I just wanted to, I think you were looking for a more specific, and I think Phil kind of took the less specific route. I was just trying to say one thing that the United Way's done in the past that I think is a natural fit for this would be the city school system as well as Laka, so.
Okay. I do, where was that going to come from?
Well...
What change in allocation was going to be made?
Well, Mr. President, we've, we've had a couple of discussions, but we've talked with some of the financial heads of the city here, and they know that we are going to put some money toward the streets and curb reconstruction. So we thought if we could, I know Howard isn't going to like this idea, but if we could take it out of that fund, and then as the general fund comes back to do those capital improvements, they could replace that money. And that was our idea. I mean, I wasn't going to take it out any other program. I know that with that capital improvement money that we're going to spend on streets that we've talked about in the budget hearings, I think that $35,000 is a small dent, but it's a dent. And I do believe that they can replace it back with that, and it won't hurt any of the other programs that we have.
It's about a 15% dent.
It's a dent.
Okay. And that was the other thing, when I, when I looked at this, you know, everything is, you know, when you look at the difference between 2012 and 2013, several of these are over 30 and 35%, you know, reduction of 40%, down 26%, 28, 72, 44, you know. That also tied into the concern, okay?
The street reconstruction, actually, last year, 2012, was only 16% of the funding, and they got 22 this year. So we, that was one of the other reasons that we considered the difference and with what our finance director said he was going to put towards the streets and curb reconstruction, that thought maybe it was going to be something like $2 million, but $35,000, it's not.
So I guess if this proposal were to be put forward, what would we reduce? Reduce street and curb reconstruction by the 35 from 246 down to 211?
I'm looking at, Mr. President, 260, 901.
Minus 35.
Minus 35. The totals for 13 and 14 there.
Okay. I see what you're saying. That includes the carryover. The actual allocation would be from 246 minus 35.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin. That was one of the questions that I, I've got three questions, but that was one. And we've heard what Counselor Adams, Counselor McLean have said. I'd like to hear from the finance director that, you know, what, what they heard is doable, that the streets program in total won't be negatively impacted. You can stay up here, Mr. Hain. No, you can stay up, but we're going to have, I've got two other questions.
Well, I, Mr. President, members of council, I guess all I can say is the city does place high priority on streets, and that's the reason why with the very substantially reduced funds available through this program, we will provide as much funding as we can into the streets program this year for matching purposes. So really, all I can say is it'll be, if this is where the funds come from, there'll be $35,000 less for matching purposes, you know, at that times, whatever the match would be.
Are you, I guess, my question is, are you saying that if we reduced it from line item six and CBD took it down by 35,000, the intent would be to replace those matching funds from the general fund?
Well, we intended to, if the, if the funds are available through a match, I mean, Howard spends most of his money with matching funds from more than one source usually. So we were, you know, if he's short $100, $200,000, we will match, you know, as, as much as we can.
Do you consider this $35,000 a significant issue or not?
Well, that's a matter of priorities for the, the council to wrestle with, frankly. The $35,000 with what, I believe you get a match of about four, two to four? One to four? So, I mean, that's a bit more than $100,000.
Thank you, Steve. The, one of the other questions I have, can this same request be made to the county commissioners in the CBD cycle? And that's for Amy.
Excuse me, the question is, can...
Can this same request, if, and I don't know where the... Can this same request, if, and I don't know where the county commissioners are with their CBGG funding, is any of their money eligible to fund this same type of request?
Their processes are different because they're not an entitlement community, meaning that they must ask a specific project that's done through the regional planning commission. And I do not know if they would be able to fund this type of request. Their focus has largely been on infrastructure and streets and a small amount of housing. Again, their grant process is different. They must request chip funds, which are different than CBG. So, the scope of projects that they may be able to fund may be more limited, but I do not know. I do know that their process has closed for this year, they named their application. But, again, it's a question that would have to be directed to the commissioners.
Okay. I guess, you know, I'll just, I'll make my comments because I really didn't have a position either way on this. I had questions, and that was one of them. I mean, the CBGG funds we're looking at are for the city of Lima. What I heard this evening that I hadn't heard previously is, that would be the focus of the efforts of this grant writer. And I think that, two things. One thing that... If there are additional funds required, and in the process with the commissioners, if that is one of the sources I'm dealing from, I would like to see the same type of request made of them, and like our city officials, along with the United Way, have that discussion. So, I'm comfortable with the request if it turns into a motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Els.
I don't want to seem stressed or difficult, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't remind council where we have been financially, and in particularly how that's affected the Public Works Department. Yes, you take a look at the current block grant proposal of $260,000, so take $35,000 off there. Someone already pointed out that we use our block grant, especially in the street division, to leverage funds, leverage outside grant dollars. For every dollar we put on the table, we typically bring in four new dollars to the city. And if that's supplanted with general fund, sure, I can understand how the sting of that is supposed to be taken away. But it wasn't too many years ago where that allocation, if I'm wrong, from the block grant going to streets was $800,000. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was even beyond that about 10 years ago. And my point is, the block grant allocation has shrunk for the entire city, and it has also shrunk in kind for public works projects. However, the price tags for paving our streets, for improving our infrastructure, for match for bridges, and all those things that we use those dollars for, sidewalks, those construction dollars continue to go up. So, 260 and just taking 35 out of there needs to be taken in into the historical context of where we've been with the block grant. Further, please remember where we have been the last two years with the city budget. The Public Works Department, in my view, made extraordinary sacrifices the last two years in trying to help the city balance the budget. I have not yet restored travel and training in our department. And when we start talking about teaching a man to fish, and it comes back to keeping our staff aware of current trends and current opportunities to make ourselves more efficient, more productive, and gain more value for the tax dollars to our constituents that we serve. We have not replaced vehicles, though we've made a beginning replacing mowers and some trucks. Most of the trucks have come out of the stormwater fund and the gas tax fund and such. But when it comes to parks, our rolling stock is deplorable. When it comes to our building and zoning division vehicles, we have a long list that has not been able to be addressed yet. So, I have lots of needs that need to come out of the general fund, and we have lots of infrastructure needs. And I just want to make sure we all remember where we've been in recent history and going back eight to 10 years, so we don't forget the magnitude of the hardships that we have taken on. And again, I'm concerned about going forward with this community. Where are infrastructures going to be five years out and 10 years out if we can't continue to find resources to reinvest? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I was kind of wavering too tonight, but in my ward, and I know it's always about priority coming to money, coming down to money. And streets, I guess are, you know, people talk about getting calls for this and that. The calls I get are involved with the street and the conditions of the streets and the improvements that are needed. So, a priority in the seventh ward, I think, would be on Public Works and having that ability to do these improvements on the streets that it needed, that are needed. The programs, the rec programs under Public Works are viable, proven programs in this community. And I come, I wandered in the social service world for many years, and I know how competitive grants are. And I know that those, that grant funds have been reduced in many areas and a lot of amounts. So, yes, you would need somebody who is capable of going out there and getting that done, but that's kind of on the if come, as far as I'm concerned. You know, you said maybe one year, but maybe two years, and maybe it would be a very successful program. But, right now, following Howard's comments, I will not support this. I believe that we need to keep that money where it is. I believe that the projects that we see around this community, as far as the streets, the intersections that have been done, infrastructure that's been done with grants in this one-to-four match have been awesome. And I think we need to start, keep building on that throughout the next few years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
Go ahead.
Mr. Low?
Yes, I've been keeping kind of quiet tonight and listening. Listening to what Mr. Howard has said. This is my fourth year on council, and I have done everything possible to support what the streets have needed. And since it has been brought up tonight, I'm just going to just say it. There's been a lot of things that have been promised to two of the parks that are in my ward. Haven't seen it. I've seen extra projects that weren't on the list being done, not in Schoonover or Lincoln Park. I've seen streets within the city being taken care of that didn't even compare to the work that needed done in different areas. I've had residents, since I've been on council, begging for curvature, which they have not received, not even enrolled, blacktopped. And it's hard to believe that if we say okay tonight, that that's all going to get taken care of, or part of it may get taken care of. So, basically, what I'm saying is, I will support this $35,000. It amazes me that we have all these questions about $35,000, but we were willing to, in my opinion, throw away a million in a building to rehab it, or we could have purchased something else. So, I'm telling you, Mr. Phil, in your organization, that you do have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of that I concur, agree with Mr. Low concerning the issue of ongoing street replacement and curbs. I, too, have issues in my ward and have been waiting to see improvements. Drainage, where yards don't get flooded because it's been paved so many times, the curbs don't exist anymore. And my residents want to see that improvement, would like to see an Elm Street improvement on our side in the fifth ward I can only speak to. I do appreciate the efforts in other areas that the Public Works has made on behalf of my ward. But again, that was sometimes, that was thinking outside the box to get it done, and I'm referencing Cook Park and the restroom activity there and involving the school system and constructing it, but it does take some funding from the city to do that, and I appreciate it very much. But, streets has been a main concern for my residents, too, and it goes back to property value, snow removal, drainage. So, you know, I can't sit here and say that I've seen improvements in that area on streets and curbs and reconstruction. It just hasn't happened. Again, I would like to make mention, of the two phases, you know, either employee, which has been a concern about, you know, hiring an employee, or doing this as a contract service. And it would lower that $35,000 down to $27,500 on behalf of the city as matching funds. If that would help sway anyone here to support this for one-year period, to see what kind of return we get, what kind of action we get, to go forward, to where eventually, the funding and that could be gained through the grant writer themselves to pay for their own position and down the road. But, you know, we have to get a start, and I'm not sure, and I'm only throwing this out again as a reminder of the two types of motions that can be made. Either the full funding of $35,000, or to do it as a contract for one year at $27,500 as matching. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. McLean?
At least, I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think that I want to restrict him in whether he's going to have an employee or a contract employee. I think with the system and the guidelines he's going to have to go through for this money through the CBGG, he has specific reports that has to go through our city. And if he does not, if he gets a contract person, he doesn't have to spend $35,000. He can have a carryover, just like you see on the rest of this. I mean, it's a situation where if he ends up to be a contract person, good for us. Does that make sense? I mean, I don't, I don't want to restrict, I think that $35,000 is a very viable amount of money that they're matching. We're getting a match, dollar for dollar. I know that the streets get sometimes $3 and $4 per dollar that we have, but again, $35,000 is not going to pave a very large parking lot or a street, and it certainly isn't going to take one up and put a curb down. So, you know, $27,500 or $35,000 is not a lot of difference, and if he needs $27,500 and that's all he's going to spend, that's fine. But let's give him the opportunity to do the job.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I just got a couple things to say on that. And I'll have to bring up the sixth ward, though, because a lot of things that happened there, and we still see it over the years. But we here talk about $35,000, but, you know, in a way saying what they want to do. What are you trying to find ways of having us write grants? And I know, sure, I always said I've never had a dollar, not in one year. Whole year we've been going without money. We're blessed that we got an $8,000 grant in Friday, so we thank God for that. But I'm hoping, I'm hoping and praying that we get this together here. He have a good plan established right now, $35,000. Hours say it going to hurt the city budget for streets and curbs and stuff, but that's a small piece of the puzzle. We got to change our ways in our city. Sometime, we got to make a change somehow. We got to look at new direction. He give us opportunity to get grants out there and find ways of teaching our folks how to do grants. Sam has said it, Tom has said it, too. Different things can happen, and we should look at the changes, you know? What can we do if somebody get trained on writing grants? What can we do if we bring a million dollars in this city? Yes, a lot of money been lost here. He's absolutely right. We lost that money coming here because we didn't have enough, agencies knew how to handle it, how to do it, and what it's all about. But we need to come together and look at something different. You got to get out the old way. It's going to come new sometime. It's going to change sometime. I've changed sometime. I'm 50 years old now, I was 38 years old back then. Things changes. But the deal is, that's what I'm trying to show your opinion. Things going to change, and we got to start buying into the new system, you know? And that's reason more people and more people always look at the CBG, say the same folks get the money. We don't want to take time out and do it. Other cities running differ from our city. I go to CBG thing, it's always marked to the areas that need the money first before they go anywhere, but ours is different. So, that's different. But we got to make some different ways of handling things. And if he come back with the report showing us what he doing, how he going about doing this, hey, this could be a win-win for our city. But his plans got it set up. I looked at some of the things there, it can be win for us, because right now, we dealing with a lot of grants coming out, a lot of money out there. We just not getting it, we not going out getting it, a lot of it. I go to Columbus, go to Toledo, I was in Waseo, Ohio this past weekend. I see all the new money they picked up, new things they picked up, new dress they wrote, their swimming pools, it's a lot different from what we got there, because they wrote grants and got it. They found ways to get money. People don't have the money to pay for things, they going out to the grants to get them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Okay. I've got some questions regarding, that aren't related to your request, okay? Thank you. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the 2013, 2014 CBGG home allocations? For the third and final, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the 2013, 2014 CBGG home allocations? Public hearing will remain open. Council will discuss and will open it up again for, to the floor. Look, I can go either way on the request, but I am going to put forth this caveat, and that is that should the United Way grant specialist get the support of council in and of itself, we get to the funding, and I'm not going to support reducing the street and curbs $35,000. I'm going to recommend that we look at reducing demolition by $17,500 and street and curb by $17,500. Another way to do that would be, frankly, to reduce demolition by $15,000, street and curbs by 15, I'm sorry, by $10,000, and property maintenance by $10,000. But I am not... But I am not going to support taking the entire $35,000 out of the street and curb So, I'll throw that out there for discussion, and I'm going to, Mr. Low, with all due respect, I'm going to start with that committee chairman, if you have any immediate thoughts on that.
Well, I appreciate the new way of coming at this, as far as spreading out the costs for this application. I'm open to all the scenarios that you mentioned of either the two out of the 17,500 out of streets and same amount out of demolition, or, as you said, $10,000 even out of property maintenance, and going 15 and 15.
Well, let me clarify that, because I did kind of twist it. 15 out of demolition, 10 out of streets, curbs, and 10 out of property maintenance. Okay?
Yeah, I can, I'm in favor of that.
Okay. And then I'm going to go to Mr. Low, because he...
I was just going to ask you to repeat exactly what you said.
An option of 17,500 out of demolition and 17,500 out of street curbs, or 15 out of demolition and 10 out of streets and curbs and 10 out of property maintenance. Okay? Mr. McLean?
Mr. President, and I guess the reason that we picked on Howard's street and curb reconstruction was that we knew that we had the capital improvement money to go towards that, and that's the only reason. We really hadn't sat down and said, "Okay, we could take, I mean, we can shuffle numbers anyway, we want, as long as we get it accomplished." And I'm okay, again, with either one of those scenarios.
Okay. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, do we still have, Howard, do we still have the money used for demolition from Attorney General? Is that funding about going on or still being used right now?
Mr. Alstro?
The additional increment of Attorney General grants that was matched one-for-one by the city out of the general fund has not fully been expended. Building Commissioner Brown is in the final throes of lining up the additional properties that will be demolished, and those will occur, it's anticipated, the rest of this year. Now, the block grant money demolition, we typically focus on commercial buildings and buildings and residential structures, which do not meet the requirements of the Attorney General Grant Fund. And again, it's council's pleasure. You all know the needs. You all know that what demolition for block grant goes for, as well as property maintenance and streets. But I appreciate council letting me talk on behalf of the Public Works Department and the need for infrastructure money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alstro. Any further, Mr. Glenn?
No, that's it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin? I like the idea of splitting where the money would come from, and I would prefer option two, which was 15, 10, and 10.
Okay. Anybody else? I am going to ask the mayor or Ms. Odom, would the 15 out of demolition, 10 out of streets, 10 out of property maintenance do irreparable harm?
There is no other opinion, sir, if you're asking me, but given the property maintenance...
Amy, could you come up, please?
I can't hear you.
I know, you've probably got a mountain of vapors, I'm sorry. Well, we have a nice, faux wood podium you can rest it on. Well, it's plywood, I mean, look in the air.
Again, I would leave, council members, I would leave the question of harm to demolition and to streets and construction to Mr. Alstro, as he's more aware of that. As for property maintenance, the majority of that funding does go to, again, personnel cost, again, for the, there are actually 11, excuse me, for property maintenance, there are the property maintenance inspectors and also the secretary and a portion of the PM inspection hours, the rehab inspector. Bottom line, there is about $255,000 that need to be maintained. If you take $10,000 out, it's going to come out of either board-up costs or come out of supplies, equipment, certification, training. This is a slim budget this year. I would probably end up having to take that again out of training. I have people in certification.
Would it be more palatable to take it out of neighborhood assistance? Or is that the same dynamics?
Same dynamics. You only really have about $20,000 with the project costs that are available in that category left, 20 to 25. Mr. President?
I guess I'm trying to find the most palatable way to do this, okay? Without, again, irreparably handicapping any of the programs, okay? I mean, I'm willing, if it would be better to do, you know, take the 10 that I had at property maintenance and take it five and five somewhere, I'm not hard and fast on property maintenance. If there's a better, more palatable way to do it, I mean, these are restricted funds once they're allocated, and that's what I'm trying to get it positioned in the most workable way for the administration. So, is there another way, or is it something can be managed about?
Again, at this point, it is really the discretion of the council members. As is stated, there are some personnel accounts that you really can't drop below.
Okay.
And so, as I just stated, you really only have about $25,000 in project cost that you can use out of neighborhood support, and you've got about 120 in board-up costs, which will probably go up, but board-up costs, supplies, equipment, and other for property maintenance.
Okay, but I guess, and this is a question for you, for Steve, for the mayor, if we did take it out of the property maintenance, and we got to a point where we had to supplement it with general fund, we can do that. We're not restricted to just spending CBGG on the work that is listed under property maintenance and only CBGG. We can support it with general fund if need be, just as was put aloft of supporting Public Works and streets and curb reconstruction with general fund. And that's something that, is the administration comfortable can be managed through?
Yes.
Okay, are we okay at 10 out of property maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, you say 10 from where?
From property maintenance.
10 out of property maintenance, 10 out of streets, 15 out of demolition. Well, I'm not completely sold on the United Way request, but I will agree that we've had to be creative in other areas. I'm willing to give it a try, if it's the $35,000. And I understand what you're saying, Teresa, about a contract job. I think that that's up to them to manage, and if that $35,000 allocation, if they do it on a contract basis and it becomes a piece of that they are able to use to extend it for a 14 or 15-month period, okay? It does one of two things, extends the availability of the grant writer or reduces the amount that they may or may not come back for, for the 2014-15 cycle, okay? Does somebody want to make that motion? Mr. McLean?
I would like to make a motion that we adjust the CBGG funding to include the United Way allocation of $35,000, and we reduce property maintenance by $10,000, streets and curb reconstruction by $15,000.
No.
Excuse me, $10,000, and...
Demolition.
Demolition by 15. That would be the $35,000 to make up for.
$10,000.
Is the motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion, the second, is that we amend the proposed 13-14 CDVG home allocations as follows. Increase line 12, the United Way Grant Specialist, plus $35,000, and reduce line four by $10,000 as property maintenance, reduce demolition line five by $15,000, and reduce street and curb reconstruction line six by $10,000. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin?
In light of all the discussion that took place, I just want to clarify one thing relative to this action. My comments relative to the county commissioners isn't to pit the city against the county, it's to be cooperative in nature and have us work together. If we are successful and we see things moving in the right direction with the action, if this motion passes, that we invite them to participate with us, and I hope that is actively pursued. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Neper?
If I could just add on to Mr. Tevin's comments, I have discussed several other issues with several of the county commissioners, and I think that probably at our next meeting, we'll be looking at some sort of committee meeting where we might be meeting with the commissioners to discuss some partnerships as moving forward in a spirit of cooperation between city and county. So, I think this falls right in line with that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Let the record reflect that Mr. Neper abstained, so it's six in favor and one against, and one abstention. Okay. Now, with that settled, I'll invite, if there's any comment from anybody in the audience that wants to address the amended, proposed 13-14 CDVG home allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to bring up another point of conversation, and during the last committee meeting, this came up, and I'm going to reiterate, it doesn't really take action by council right now, but since we're all here at this meeting, this process with the CDVG home allocations and the consolidated plan, many, many years has run into, right up to and against the deadline, and has brought about the need for special council meetings and et cetera, to try to get this approved and passed by a certain deadline so it could be submitted. And every year, we run into different obstacles in terms of scheduling and people's vacation time, et cetera. And I'm going to reiterate to the administration that I think next year, this process can be expedited prior to knowing the final dollars that we're going to get for CDVG home allocations by focusing earlier, having the application process that is earlier, and defining a percentage of allocation, whatever that allocation may be, so that a lot of it can be done, and we can be taking action, legislative action, perhaps as early as early June, when we do get the numbers, and then we just simply plug it in based on the percentages that have been arrived at through the public hearing process, et cetera. I just think that that is something that needs to happen, both for the expediency of council, so that we're not jammed up against an August 1st deadline, which actually has to be about a July 20th deadline, so all the paperwork can be completed. I think it puts us in a, going to a percentage basis puts us in a general philosophy decision process, as opposed to arguing over $1,000 here or there, okay? Yes, it might need to be adjusted, but I think it can be done a little bit easier. I think, frankly, it would save the Department of Community Development a lot of headaches of when is it going to get passed and that type of thing. So, I just wanted to say that in the public hearing format, so that council is aware of it, the administration is aware of it, and I think it's something that we need to perhaps strive for, if it's possible, next year. So, is there anybody? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, I think that's easier said than done.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be difficult. The numbers move around. Almost a rumor mill in the federal government about where the numbers are going. And for example, today's email from some federal source indicates that the block grant will be reduced by 50% next year. We were dealing with rumors as we started the process that we were going to have a dramatic reduction. We ended up, at the end of the day, with a different number that was actually higher. All of that really has a bearing on how we approach this, and I think while the percentages come to bear, as Ms. Odom was describing, there are certain costs that, once you get down to a certain level, you have to take them all out or not. So, it's a, I understand what you're saying. I do appreciate the idea of being sensitive to the calendar. I'm not sure that approaching it, as you described, will work, but we'll give it, we'll give it serious consideration.
Okay. And it's more of, my comment is a comment, as I'm not asking for a motion to require it. I just think that, I mean, I came in tonight not thinking I was going to support the United Way request, okay? But I do, and some of the questions, as we worked through it, we have to look at things a new way sometimes. So, I would appreciate the effort to at least give it a try, okay? Mr. Law Director, is there anything else we need to take care of in the public hearing Yep, well, that's why I'm asking, before we close. Okay. So, okay. Third and final time, if there's anybody that wants to speak to the 13-14 CDVG home allocations, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we will continue on with the agenda. Consent, I'm sorry, privilege of the floor. Is Shaiyad Hazi, did I say that right? Is Gina here? She is not here. Mr. Robert Horton? He's here. Does he still want to speak?
I must say, good evening, and I think the council found, give me the privilege to speak this evening. And what I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm saying in love, for progress, for togetherness here in the city of Lima, for recognizing diversity in the city of Lima, and also for just doing the right thing. Some given time, we have got to come to realization that there are things that might be controversial. It might be controversial if we don't approach them properly, but also sometime that controversy will bring about progress. So, I'm here to say, if I was to entitle this little speech of mine, I would say, let's just stop the madness. just stop the madness. Let's stop the madness. And what madness am I talking about? This is madness of young men and women, young boys and girls dying on the street, being killed. And I must say that no one should be killed. No one should lose their life. But we have a problem, and the problem is when, and I want you to take this in love, listen, when a Caucasian kill a main Afro-American, we jump up with force, we march, we concerned about that, and we should be, because someone has lost a dad, a son, someone has lost a brother, some mother lost is mourning over child. But seem like some, just some of the populace at large in our great city, seemingly say, I want to take action, I want some justice, and what am I to do? I'm going to march. And I want you to remember one thing, that I was brought up in a segregation, I was brought up in a segregation state of Alabama, went to school, and I've seen it, but yet and still, I don't have to live in it like this, it's really concerned me. And I love my neighbor regardless what pigmentation of their skin. I love my neighbor. And also, on the other hand, on the other side of the pendulum, there we have Afro-American, young men, a woman, women, boys, a girl, killing another Afro-American, boy, a girl. But what do we do? Some of the populace don't do anything, don't say anything, but yet and still, on the other hand, we still have a mother that's mourning the loss of a child, a wife mourning the loss of a husband, and also brothers and siblings that mourn their loss, but yet and still, we are the populace. We just don't seem to care. But I care my way, and I want to tell you one thing, that I have put this, written it in the Lima news, but I thought maybe I might get out in TV land, not to show my face, beautiful face, if you will. Huh? But I put this where I might be able to reach more people. Now, when I say controversial, they might not like Bob Horton, but if I stand on the truth, regardless whether they like me or not, I'm going to speak it. So what is the root reason? What is the root cause for these actions? What is the root? No one should be getting killed. We should, too many people are dying naturally now, think I'm blind, you go to the nursing home, a lot of people sick, they're growing younger and younger every day. I know, I'm there visiting. But I tell you one thing, we, we have people, young boys and girls, the root cause, young men, we have domestic violence, domestic violence is a large part of it. Not only that, domestic violence, but we have robberies, burglaries, and last and not least, we have drugs. It's power in our city of Lima, and I'm passionate about this. And you look at the TV, and you see the people, Caucasian, other race, might kill Afro-American, boy, I'm going to tell you, it's something else. And you know, we have experienced this over the last three or four years, five years ago, people march, and I'm still going to stand, and stand up against it. No one should get murdered. Now, the police department is doing all they possibly can, all they possibly can. So we, as citizens, and I am a concerned citizen tonight, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, I want you to know that, as a concerned citizen, that's all, no more, no less, we should be working hand and head to stop this madness, because we have too many people, young people dying naturally right now. There's no need of going out there, taking a life, and so much hatred perpetrated in a lot of our heart. And just like I said, I lived at Jim Crow, and it's a long history, but yet and still, I love everybody in here, might not like your ways, but I love you. You see, it's a difference between hating someone, but you can hate someone ways. Listen, please think on this, that's the way that we can stop the madness, and you heard me say this, and Mr. President, I'm not preaching, but I want to leave one scripture, James one nineteen, "Whomfore my beloved brethren be swift to hear." When someone tried to start a problem with you, what we should do is listen, be swift to hear, slow to speak, don't speak too fast, think before we speak, think before we speak. Swift to hear, slow to speak, and slow to rap. Rap is that element that comes after anger, that's what that is. But we call one to strike out and say, I'm going to take this life, thank you for the time here.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. The consent calendar?
Mr. President.
Ms. Townsend.
I move that item A in the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is that item A be received, filed, and approved, and item B be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number one be received and filed, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place demolition tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed, legislation is also on the agenda tonight.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding payment to Kettle Creations.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that communication number four be received and filed, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for cash transfers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number five be received and filed, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to advertise and contract for the St. John's Road booster station project.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number six be received and filed, and authorize the law director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six, and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to receive a gift from Linus Sertoma Club.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Rhineiki Mazda Nissan.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number eight receive and file, legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding the stock transfer to Mirage Properties at one twenty-two West North Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine, and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works regarding legislation to purchase a pickup truck.
Mr. President.
Mr. Neper.
I move that communication number ten be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, I'm sorry, the motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number ten, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eleven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation for the adoption of the C W G Home Action Plan for two thousand thirteen fourteen.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number eleven be received and filed, legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
And I guess I'll address the legislation at that time on the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eleven, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Petitions for alley vacation.
An alley vacation, the Fisher Alley, north of East Wayne Street, the petitioner is the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I'd like to make a motion that the petition be received and filed, and that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, and also that the clerk calls publication of the legal ad and notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held August the fifth, two thousand thirteen, at seven P M.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file the petition, and to authorize the clerk to, authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation, and have the clerk cause publication of a legal ad notifying abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held on August fifth at seven P M. in these chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Reports of officials, Mr. Rick Stahle.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, it's good to be here tonight to give you a quick update, impending Fourth of July festivities slated for this Thursday at Fro Park. I have made a formal request to Mr. Caprella, if he'd stop doing the rain dance, we can get this little low front out of the way and move on with things. He assures me that the weather will be fine, so with that, we will go ahead. Our activities will begin about eight-thirty in the morning with our abilities league, and then the race, the Freedom Five K will take place about nine o'clock, somewhere between a thousand, eleven hundred runners will embark on the streets in River Walk with that event. Also introducing this year, new this year, is a Freedom Fun Ride, which will take place starting behind our Central Services Building going southwest on the River Walk, and it's not a bike race as much as it is a bike tour, part of our partnership in the city here with Activate Allen County, and getting people introduced to biking events, and we thought one of the subcommittees that had me on wanted to try to incorporate this into one of the big events that the city and the community is involved in, and the Star Spangled Committee embraced that opportunity, and so we will be doing that about ten, ten fifteen in the morning, and again, it's just a tour, they're going to pick up a little trivia questions here, there, and where along the route, and whoever comes up with the most correct answers, those names all go into a hopper, and they're going to pull the winner for a new bicycle, so that's something new for this year.
Where's the rallying point for that? I thought I heard once or twice about it, but I've seen nothing in the advertisements.
Wow, it's been there, Central Services Building, right there at nine hundred South College, we'll stage it, and we'll head southwest away from the park, and then come back to that same spot. Of course, family kickball and volleyball, sand volleyball, our W O B L All-Star Game about four o'clock, Lima Locos now, due to all the rain, will be playing a double header on Thursday, I understand, instead of just a single game, and that'll start about four o'clock, but our main stage entertainment, then, about four o'clock at the Pavilion Stage, for the first time, I believe, Lima Area Concert Band will be there entertaining folks from five to seven, will have some kid shows starting about four o'clock there on the Pavilion Stage, then, of course, the kids' rides, which are always a big attraction, from four to about nine o'clock over there behind Diamond Two. Moving on real quick, the main stage entertainment, then, will commence, as I mentioned, at seven with Nashville Crush, the Lima Symphony will come on at eight, and something new this year, we're trying out, the band Nashville Crush will come on after the fireworks for about a twenty to thirty minute follow-up, we think that's going to help in a number of different ways with releasing of all the people back into the community after the fireworks, some people want to go immediately, some will want to stick around and listen, and so something the committee wanted to try to help relieve some of the exodus from the park. Again, this is the twentieth anniversary of this event, again, the presenting sponsors, Superior Federal Credit Union Lima News, City of Lima, St. Rita's, your hometown station, stations have been behind this, it's become, obviously, the event that a lot of people come home for, and we encourage not only the people who continue to support this event to do so, but those who want to get involved, and again, certainly thank all those folks that have made a difference over the twenty years, investing not only of their time and their talent, but also that extra, those extra dollars that helped make this event the event that it is, so. Anyone who wants to come on out on the fifth, everyone talks about the fourth, but really, for me, the fifth of July is the event for cleaning up, our goal is to get that park back into, into service as quickly as possible on the fifth, and we usually begin about seven o'clock the next morning, so you're invited out to come out and help a few of us get that, get that rolling in the morning, but again.
Mike's got plans now, Mike.
Yeah, Mike's got plans, he's got plans. We want to thank everyone, I mean, it really, it is, it is a great community event, we estimate upwards of forty thousand people coming out in and around the Fro Park. We estimate upwards of 40,000 people coming out in and around the Fro Park area to be a part of a great celebration that's been going on for 20 years. So hope you have a great day and enjoy the event. Anyone have any questions I could help you out with tonight?
Bus rights?
Bus, bus, good point. Again, we're shuttling from St. Rita's right down to the park. We also have handicap parking there behind Diamond Two at bottom of Cole Street. We'll have a handicap bus available to bring people up into the bowl area or up to the Pavilion Area. And those start about 2:00, I think.
Noon on the handicap bus, I think, too.
Two on the regular shuttles coming down from St. Rita's. So noon for the handicap parking down there, getting people over to the park. Tremendous amount of vendors again this year. People looking forward to getting out and getting involved with the event. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. There are no reports of committees or resolutions. Ordinance 12313.
This was the second reading adopting the tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year for the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 12313 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 12313 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
I think we've all been.
You don't remember, Mike? We've all been. Mr. Tevin prayed loudly.
It was a long time ago. Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 12313 has been passed on its second reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 120, I'm sorry, 13313.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 13313 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13313 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13313 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 13413.
Loving a special assessment for demolition charges for dangerous structures in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 134-13 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13413 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13413 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 13513.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reineke Ford for the purchase of a new pickup truck for the Public Works Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 13513 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13513 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13513 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 13613.
Authorizing the mayor to accept an expended donation from the Lima Sertoma Club.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 13613 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13613 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13613 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 13713.
Adopting the 2013-14 Annual Update to the Lima Consolidated Plan and authorizing submission thereof to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance 137-13 be passed on its first reading as amended from the public hearing tonight and provide a clean copy.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13713 on its first reading as amended in the attachment and to provide a clean copy. Is there any discussion? Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I would like to thank the chairperson, Ms. Adams, because I know she worked very tirelessly on this issue, took a lot of time, a lot of effort. We've had a lot of communication and I just want to publicly thank you and Derry for the support that you gave us and Mrs. Odom, by the way. We've had a lot of questions, a lot of answers out there, and I do appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
I'll echo a couple of things. But Ms. Adams, she just take a hold of this and each year she take a hold of it and look up everything and do a good job.
Thank you.
You know, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
Thank both councilors, but it's definitely an effort not only by the committee, members of Counselor McLean and Counselor Glenn, but of the administration, Ms. Odom, and appreciate the patience that she's had in the meetings, the hearings, the phone calls, and her time as always. And I appreciate this evening and the public hearing, the discussion that occurred. Hopefully, questions were answered. I think I want to thank the President of Council for coming up with the way of funding it and so that one line item did not take the hit and the efforts on the administration and hopefully through the general fund and replacing that if need be as it progresses for next year for those funds that were affected tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Nefer.
I just want to again say that I would be abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. I just have one comment and everybody else has said it, but Theresa, I know that you spearheaded this through the committee and did a lot of work on it and, you know, it's probably a more contentious process sometimes than the entire budget process. No disrespect to you, Mr. Tevin, but there are constraints and requirements as there are with both and it's equally as important. And I also want to thank Amy and the entire administrative staff for working on this. I think we came up with a good plan. I can say from experience, this is not, you know, by any stretch the longest process that we've had. I remember early, about 19 years ago, doing this and being here until about 11:45 at night, hammering over a few thousand dollars. Okay? But I think it was a good discussion. I think we came up with a good plan. So with that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes. Oh, abstain. Sorry.
Nefer.
So excited.
Golly, who is abstaining?
Abstain.
I was just like abstained and then he says yes.
Tony, can you watch him for us, please?
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Ordinance 13713 has passed on its first reading by a six to one vote with one abstention. And we'll move on to ordinance 13813.
Amending the 2013 Annual Budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 13813 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13813 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
And McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13813 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 13913.
Authorizing the transfer of cash between certain funds as herein described.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that ordinance 13913 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 13913 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 13913 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 14013.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reineke Mazda Nissan Inc. for the purchase of three 2014 Ford sedan police interceptors.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I believe that ordinance 140-13 passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 14013 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
And Mr. Low.
Yes. Ordinance 14013 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. miscellaneous business, Mr. Tevin? Nothing this evening. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things this evening. I'd like to call a meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee for July 22nd at 6:00 p.m. The subject will be the continuation of the discussion on the junk autos. I'm happy to report that the council clerk has prepared a letter and it will be going out in the mail tomorrow to the property owners of multiple properties in the city to invite them to attend the July 22nd meeting. Hopefully, we will have a full house here and have a healthy discussion and get their input and move this along. 6:00, July 22nd. And the last item I have is I would, as a body of council, would like to recognize our clerk, Sally Clemens, as being named the Optimist of the Year. This past last week and a half, I think, and congratulations to her.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. I know everybody tired tonight, but you will hear me tonight. Thank you. But first of all, I want to thank Cornerstone Harbor for allowing us to have, I think we have a jam section out in the park in Martin De King Park. That'd be in the next couple of weeks to be working on bikes, giving out food and have church out there. I'd be glad to have them out there. Also, I want to thank, I think, Ms. Houston, who received a Six War Person of the Month, 90 years old, and it was outstanding at the Civic Center. Mr. Blast, but it was great. I appreciate everyone helped out with that and did a good job with that project. Also, I want to congratulate Sally, too, for what she's doing. Smile. You're welcome. Yeah, it's great, though, but I hope everyone have a good Fourth of July, spend that day and celebrate our country birthday and just have a good time and get out to the park and come out to our new league we have out at Martin De King Park, the Jackie Robinson League. The kids kick off that day at 1:00, then we all coming out to the park to eat then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Ms. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just everybody have a safe Fourth of July and happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nefer?
Just one item, you know, it's rare that we sit back and see how thankful we are, but there was an article on the front page of the Lima News this morning about fireworks shows specifically with military, connected with military bases and how they've been canceled as a part of the sequester, I would imagine. But communities, this is something that a lot of communities around the country have faced over the last several years. And I think it's at that point that I just am thankful that we are fortunate enough to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the Star Spangled Republic Taco this year. I want to thank the mayor and Howard specifically for their involvement 20 years ago in, after the Clyde Evans Stores sold and this community was faced without a Fourth of July celebration. Their insight and their vision to help create this. And, you know, even today, to the fact that all the private businesses that come together for this event each year and help support it and put it on, I'm proud to say that unless I miss something new, you know, we'll be watching the largest fireworks display in Ohio on the Fourth of July this year because of the calendar, Columbus actually falls on the 3rd this year. So, you know, you don't always think of Lima as a haven for this sort of stuff, but that's pretty cool to say that we'll shoot the largest fireworks display on the Fourth of July in Ohio this year. And that's because of a lot of people's effort and a lot of businesses and that which they've given back through the years. So that's all I have. Hope to see you on the Fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Nefer. Mr. McLean?
I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth and be safe out there and enjoy your Fourth of July and make a long weekend, like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.